...on council meeting for May 26. Please count the order. The first item of business is the Fledges Allegiance and a Moment of Silence. That, would you please?
Fledges Allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberity and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Item two is public comment. Is there anyone here from the public wishing to speak at this time? Okay, we will close public comment and move on to item three, which is approval of prior minutes.
I don't approve that.
Second.
That's what you get for making words.
Any corrections?
I replaced a quote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There are any appointments on for this evening? Mayor's comments? Wasn't that a great parade?
It was a great parade.
It was a great day.
I particularly enjoyed it.
I particularly enjoyed the duck race with the ducks swimming upstream and down to the bone for the rotary. But I think all the groups... The duck was excellent.
I heard that he was hot.
He was a hot duck, yes.
It was not.
And Mr. Goldring had opened up the bank building for the public to walk through. We hear a lot of really good comments about that building and all the groups that marched. I mean, we got all done and I got time to watch the rest of the parade continue. So it was really spectacular day. So very proud of everybody's work. But thank you for all your... Because I saw just about everybody there on Sunday. And Walter, you look handsome in a red belt.
Well, thank you very much, Madam President. You're wonderful.
Item six are updates. But before we do that, I'd like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules to add two items to the general. The first item is to extend the subcommittee, the recycling subcommittee, for another, well, few months, well, to June 8th. Or did you want?
No, that's six months.
It was originally... So it was six months past their June 8th end date? So is there, was there a motion?
There's a motion.
All in favor of suspending the rules? Opposed? Abstained?
What number is this?
This is going to be right after Mayor's comments, where I just wanted to suspend the rules to add that extension.
Set six eight?
Sure. Or five, I don't know.
Okay.
An extension of six months for the recycling subcommittee. Is there a motion for that? So who?
Sorry.
Anyone want to speak to it?
Yes, we have to. We are, we've made great progress and come up with lots of excellent ideas, but there are a few things that we really feel we'd be remiss to submit a final, using that word, which is part of our charge, a final report without clearing up a few things. And, you know, it takes time because of other people and other agencies involved, so.
Would the council expect an update in the middle or any kind of... Is there anything? The final's the best or not?
Yeah. I think one person disagrees with you.
Yes, three of us on the subcommittee.
Oh, all right. Any other topic on that?
Just mentioning the extension. While we're meeting over the last year, there's been several programs at the state level that have come up and we've had to deal with it. We wouldn't have, like the mattress program. There wasn't a mattress program and now the state's getting involved. So we have to implement that. So it's taking us more time than we were required.
I just meant updates like the United, not the United. Salvation Army bin and things like that.
Do that.
Yeah.
We can see the updates on the things that have actually been added.
Yeah, yeah. That have been added because it's such a good...
Well, that's a good one.
Okay. Next, you know that. Austin?
I'm going to nominate Katie to make that.
Okay. I second that.
She's taking most of the notes on that.
Thank you very much. Because there have been some changes in the center, including ours and things. So I don't have to...
Glad to do that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? And the other was to add a resolution, to amend a past resolution on money that has already been borrowed for more road improvements. And if we can add that as a topic, then I...
Let me make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? If we could take care of that now, I have bond counsel here to speak to it. What happened a couple of years ago, 2012, we had a bonding project to do Riverview Road, who knows how to say this, Womachenach Brook Bridge. Gaylord Road Bridge over Morrissey, or Morrissey Brook Bridge, and some work on the dam and fleet refueling system. The work on the dam, at the time we went to borrow the money, we didn't know that the state was going to be creating a program that we could enter. So after we borrowed the money, we found out that the state had a program available that would not only do the spillway work that we didn't want to address, but also the face of the dam. And so by entering that program, we can get more work done and spend less of our money. So Mike's going to be giving you an update later, which will give you some of these exact numbers. But as I understand it, we were going to spend $695 on the spillway and now we'll be able to spend $400 and something. And the state will pay to get the whole dam refaced to an incline they like nowadays and more work on the spillway. So we'll spend $400 and something instead of $695 to get more work done. The other issue was the fleet refueling system. So as you know, the fleet refueling system that we have down on Patriots Way needed to be updated. We already did some work on putting sensors in there and now we can get external pumps for about $50,000. But in the meantime of identifying that project, when we first rolled it out to bid, it came in at more than what we had designated. Also, since then, the Century Brads project was approved for $2.5 million, which we didn't know was going to happen back when we did that. And so with the thought of moving the fueling station off of Patriots Way, because in the traffic study, we had the traffic realigned and stuff going through Patriots Way. So having the gas station there is kind of sketchy. And people want to redevelop the riverfront and everything. So not really knowing where we want to put that, we want to buy a system that we put where we want it to be. So with Century Brads coming down, we want to wait until that project comes down and we get an update on how that's going from Mike tonight also. So this is money that's already borrowed and we want to just reallocate where it's to be expended. So the request this evening, this resolution is for $950,000, which is those two projects together, to do road work. And Michael has some of the names of the roads, but one of them is Grove Street. So I'm kind of excited about that. To reauthorize where the money is to be expended. And I have the bond counsel here to answer any questions. So we're all on the up and up and legal and all of that.
Okay. Another question, I'm just about to bond. So knowing that we've reassigned the senior asset, we still need some sort of refueling system. What about the Womachenach Bridge?
All the other work was done, but we didn't expend the money for the refueling station and the reservoirs, I understand. I know Gaylord Road Bridge worked.
Did we do the clear?
We sold that. Because we just opened the Gaylord.
Right, okay. So what I'm getting at is then, so at some point in the future, we're going to need to find X dollars. You just said some of those pumps were $50,000. So it's not as if the need is gone.
The need does not go away for the fleet refueling.
Right.
But what we'll end up doing is paying the premium price on these dams?
No, I, okay, all right. So, and that's, that's the only item that necessarily is going to be coming at us at some time in the future? You said that...
In short term. Because in the other project ongoing with the state, we're going to be partnering with them.
Right. Okay. We're going to get more work for less money by bringing that down to work there.
Okay. Joe, I have to ask you a question. So for the, for the resolution, would you mind introducing yourself to the council? Because I think maybe everyone doesn't know you.
Joe Fassina, bond counsel to the town.
For years and years. I know you probably miss a rate of life. So I have the resolution here, which you'll see on your handout. It is appropriated. It's just a reurgitation of the same appropriation that was from 2012. Did you guys hand out the resolution? Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. The one with the line through it is the one you took action on in 2012. The new one includes a chart, which you'll see adds the road improvements. And on page two, the language that proposed infrastructure prepared by the town in New Milford Public Works Department and the current five-year capital plan. So that will help you identify the roads that would be included. And then Mike again will give you an update this evening on that. So this resolution, because we're changing where the money was originally advertised to be spent, will require a town meeting. So we'll have to schedule a town meeting. So probably before the next council meeting. So we need a motion adopting the resolution, Joe?
That's correct. And then if you decide to schedule the town meeting tonight, you need to waive suspended rules to do that and then to that.
Right. Joe, I see your meaning.
Yeah, I don't know when to speak up on this question. But I have a question for the bond.
Would you mind coming up to the podium, Joe? Thank you.
People or organizations go out and buy these, these banned, these bonds, anticipating there's going to be certain type of work done or is it generalized ones advertised or sale such that, you know, if people are willing to purchase bans or bonds by a town in New Milford and then we turn around and use it for something other than its original purpose, does that raise a question by those people going out and purchasing those?
Not if you do it legally. Really, what they're buying is simply a cash flow. They couldn't care less whether you build a school or a road.
Is, thank you. Is there...
May I just wait in case there's another question?
Is there an urgency where this can't be put over tomorrow?
Well, the urgency, as I was talking to Mike, was now that we've had so much damage to the roads from this harsh winter, was to immediately get out there before the new budget. The new budget is on July. And so if this would make the money available in just two weeks and they can start planning on it right away.
My, my concern is it's a significant amount of money that we're fully looking to need allocated, $950,000. And we're doing, we've got an urgency here. It's just about being open and putting our community unnoticed. But these kinds of significant matters, these are large allocation funds. And if we notice it properly, it gives people, if they want the opportunity, to speak on the issue. Everybody knows, I travel Grove Street every day and I'm the fastest traveler. I don't know who else does. And it is horrific on that, on the section of, bless you, of roadway. And the fact that we haven't done anything to, the fact that no one's complaining that they've blown out a bolt joint on your car yet, because I've hit some of those nasty ones. That we haven't done something temporary, literally just filling up right now until we can get, you fill the potholes on my block. You own 10 homes. Thousands of cars travel like Grove Street every day, thousands. And so I know the urgency there, but we owe it to the community to let them know what's going on when we're moving huge amounts of money.
And I agree with you. And that's why the town meeting is the advertisement that'll be in the paper and then the public can speak to it. So that's the only part. It's not an approval on moving the money. It's an approval on the resolution, which we're required to have. Then we advertise the town meeting, which is in the newspaper, which is probably a little better advertising than our normal agenda. And the video will be out. And then people can speak to it that night. If they hate it, then they can vote no.
I agree. Town meetings are almost a little bit of a joke standard. I know it's, I, it's just, you know, if we get, if we receive backlash from the community, it's on just not letting them know we're doing big things. Yes, it's, it's a million dollars. It's just a million dollars. That's a big block.
Thank you.
Like them to know about it. So it makes me a little bit uncomfortable doing this quick.
Right.
Yeah, I just asked, Joe, what would be your ideal solution? Just move it two weeks. Two weeks does what? Puts it on the agenda. So the, the agendas are published, or by those four in three. And you think, Pat, that advertising the town meeting would be more publicity than the average town council agenda?
I do. And it'll be on the next agenda also as action or as an update or as a follow-up. You could have an advertiser to follow up for the town meeting. It gets a little bit more advertising because it's in the newspaper. It'll be posted in the minutes this evening, so it'll be two weeks from now. You know, it's up to the council's comfort, but we saw Joe was available, so.
I just want to make sure I'm correct. In my understanding, this, and because it is a resolution, this would all, this whole resolution base would be published?
Right.
Yeah. Which we don't get. You know, our agenda is, or period, but it's not in the paper. Especially those areas, which I think it's fair to say that would give more view than our agenda.
Tom?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, most of the time I would agree with Joe on us getting plenty of notice. And I do agree with that in all cases. But I do think in this particular cases, that we will give the exposure. My question is to expedite. I know from what I've read and see social media wise, Grove Street is a pressing concern like right now. So if this gets approved two weeks from now, how quickly can we resolve the Grove Street issue? Because, you know, we're heading right dead in the middle of summer traffic coming up. Started this weekend. And when school is out in three weeks, you know, these hills are going to fill up with everybody from, you know, from here to Litchfield. And that road could use that work. Are we going to be able to get some of that work done or at least put a band-aid on it prior to that? Some sort of timeframe on whether we can attack Grove Street? I don't know. Mike's going to be updating, but I'm, I'm looking into that answer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Kind of piggybacking on council, the failures of concerns. You had just mentioned that maybe we could do an update at the next council meeting. Make sure it's on the agenda and work so that anybody can come to the council agenda and kind of talk about it in public representation. It gives the public a chance to kind of wish their concerns because we don't, besides doing this resolution, we really don't do anything except the county. Correct?
Correct. And this money was already borrowed. And in the authorizing, the resolution had already included road, road, yeah. This was already a road bond also in here. But I can understand, Joe. And what I could do also, we could put on an estimate of when we think we're going to get to the other projects. That could be helpful.
The dam and the gas station.
Yeah. Because we didn't know that we were going to be involved in the other projects that they were, that were going to be originally had. Mary Jane?
When is the, the rotary project supposed to start? The last one, I don't have a date. Is that going to be a conflict with Grove Street?
We wouldn't want to have them both on at the same time.
Right. Should have already started out.
Sure, Mike and Dan are, you're listening, right?
Yeah.
So that would be, we have to estimate. So timelines. Well, if we don't have enough timelines off the top of my head tonight, we'll have them come back. And that way we can speak to those two projects too. Because it's not like they're not going to get done. They're going to get done. It's just a question of why. Would that be helpful?
I just want the public to know where I was.
Yep. Any other questions for bond, Captain? All in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Opposed? And what are the rules to add the town meeting date?
Question, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
I note that we resolved an amendment to the 2012 Public Works Program Bond Resolution approved at tonight's meeting. We submitted to a vote at a special town meeting to be held on Monday, June 8th, 2015, at 7:15 PM in the E. Paul Martin Room of the Roger Sherman Town Hall pursuant to Section 503 of the Charter of the Town Hall. Is there a second question?
Further discussion at the county? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes?
Before we go to updates, we have two ladies from a library board here. That does not seem like a complicated, if we could deal with Tennessee. We appreciate that.
Sure. Got no problem with that. Do the rest of the council, Mike, if we look that up?
No, at all.
All righty. Tennessee is a discussion possible action on creation of a library modernization committee consisting of nine members effective May 26, 2015, for a term of six months. And Joe, to your point, the reason we don't have any names next to it is to make sure everybody can hear that one was created in case they want to call and volunteer, be considered or make suggestions.
Is there going to be any kind of funds?
The funds were already appropriated in this year's budget. And then the library had met and come up with different ideas and what they want to do. Plus they hired a new director. And now we're ready to move forward with the study.
I'll make the motion for the creation of a library modernization committee consisting of nine members effective May 26, 2015, for a term of six months.
Right here.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, Walter.
You're their favorite.
No, you're all favorites.
Ah, good one.
Thank you, ladies.
Okay. Next is an update by Parks and Rec. And we have this one more today. You got the green, that is good.
I think today's green, definitely. Dan asked me to step in for him tonight and just give you an update on what we're doing program-wise at the department. The big thing was the pandemic opened for business on Saturday. I moved my mittens. I'm so home. But Sunday and Monday were much better. I'm so glad that the temperature has gone up to where it should be. We have 13 lifeguards, trained lifeguards, American Red Cross, Serpide, all ready to go. They've been on the beach already. Boat slips, all 83 of our boat slips have been sold. Summer camp, we've hired 99% of our summer help. All of them have thus far been trained in CPR and first aid. We have approximately 50 counselors and supervisors. Summer camp begins on June 22nd. Right now, we have, at close of business today, we have 232 kids signed up for our summer camp, which is one of the best deals going into town. It works out to be about $1.86 per hour for the length of summer camp. We're going to be offering some new programs in the fall, including learning how to be a cheerleader, fly fishing and fly tiny. A program that the mayor had given us a grant for to begin called Ball Tuckered Out at Saranoke, where the kids just go and play and play dodgeball and just have a ball and just have fun. We're also doing Irish dance, introduction to Facebook, and trips to the New York Yankees on June 21st, which happens to be Father's Day, and Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade. If anyone's interested in either of those, they're available to sign up now. And one of the programs that I did want to mention that's an older program, older, we've been running it for about five years, is called Girls in the Groove and Boys Have a Move. We started out with about 10 kids at Saranoke. It's a running program that promotes healthy lifestyles and healthy eating and healthy choices. And right now we have 75 kids in two programs. And we're very proud of them to go from such a small number up to such a large number. And we could keep going if we had room at school. And it's just so, so popular. So that's what's coming up. That's what we're doing. Any questions?
Thank you. Katie?
Nice to hear so many kids are getting involved. On the boat slips, all eight years sold. Do you have any idea what percentage they would take of New Milford? Are they all New Milford residents?
All New Milford residents, they have to be.
What's the higher fee charge? I thought there was a category that you could rent if you were not full-time.
We did that two years ago because we had not sold all of the slips.
Oh, that's for you.
And it was just a one-shot deal. Just to sell the remaining slips two years ago.
And my second question is, where are we with the, an update on what's happening with the changes that we proved on your, your half road?
At things, at pandemic. At pandemic. Things are moving along. I know right now they're working on the bid specs. We all wish that things moved faster.
Fast enough.
I think they're just waiting to make up the bid specifications for...
You mean to let town make them up?
It would be, it would be a matter of the department. And I believe Mr. Smansky is going to be working with us on the specs.
So where are we then? And what else has we started?
We are where Ellen and I just said, waiting for the bid specs to be...
But is it our side or the vendor's side?
I think Parks and Rec has been prepared.
Okay. So we're waiting for the vendor to do this portion?
That's the report I got from Dan.
And what is our window of how long we wait for that?
As the commission, I know Mr. Peter has been, has been making phone calls and whatnot to move things along as quickly as we can.
There's a lot of, a lot of good intentions, promises. A lot of discussions has had, as I'm sure you know, you were involved in. And then we talked about all of this. And I think we all expected to be a little further along in that project than we are now. So I just was curious as to what was holding it up. Because, you know, there's some things aren't set yet, some things not quite so. So if it's a vendor and Mr. Peter, do you have any commission to see him with that?
Uh huh.
Okay, I'm getting an update on that, um, like, say, the next meeting?
Sure, I know.
I'll, uh, call time and find out, I think, where he is with that.
Thanks, I'm, uh, sure.
Your most great progress.
Any other, oh, yeah, yeah, Beth?
Uh, first off, I apologize. Yeah, it's a happy, thank you very much, yeah. Um, but you guys have done a great job. I was excited to see this swim team in the parade, uh, it's a personal passion of mine own. So I noticed there were a lot more swimmers on the summer team.
On the summer team, yes.
That's great.
Well, right now, we have forty-four.
And that's, I was struggling a little bit, so I was very excited to see. So very well done.
I think the, the partnering with USA Swimming has made a big difference, because with being a partnership with USA Swimming, for those of you who don't know, um, who have never had someone involved in the swimming program, the USA Swimming brings the swimmers up to a different level, offers them a different level, should they decide to compete more competitively with their swimming. And it keeps them here in town as opposed to traveling to Brookfield. My daughter swam for years for Mako's in, in, uh, the Y down in Brookfield. And not only was it, uh, a challenge to get her to practice all the time, it was also a challenge to come up with a lot of the fees that the, uh, the Y charges. So we're very lucky to have that partnership with USA Swimming, and it has boosted our numbers.
Yeah, so, very well done, huh?
Yes.
The other thing is, uh, I know a couple of years ago, you had problems at Young's Field with the softball field, the drainage, how's that going now?
It seems to be going very, very well. Well, heaven have a huge amount of rain, you know? Yeah, so.
Well, that's exactly. I think about the Helen Marks Field as well.
The Helen Marks Field is magnificent now. I mean, it really is, and, and our guys have gone out and cut out the, the, uh, uh, base lines and whatnot. It really does and look nice and wonderful, it does. And people are actually excited about using the Helen Marks Fields.
Thank you. Thank you, Pete.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank you and your staff, all of you guys do, especially at Hellcander. My daughter is in the girls' group, and she ran first, Kayla, last year.
She is right now.
She's in right now to
She sure is coming tomorrow.
Some major, amazing change, but she's been able to do that, so I was personally wanting to say thank you.
It's a great program, and I'll pass it along to our instructors, because it's all, all credit to them, for the job they do.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions for Ellen? Thanks, Ellen.
Thank you.
Nice to talk to you. Public Works Road Projects.
Good evening. Mike, Public Works Project, Dan Stanton, the associate manager. Um, I'm going to, Dan, give you just a quick update on the projects that have gone on throughout the current fiscal year and our proposals for 2015-16. Hopefully we'll hit on some of the hot segment, just a few agenda items ago, and then we can, as I said, we'll, we'll develop some more specifics as well, right?
So this current fiscal year that we're in, we had some operating capital given to us, an amount of about $685,000, uh, that allowed us to perform reconstruction of Meeting House Terrace, Bedlam Drive of Gaylord's Hill, and a resurfacing of Norton Lane, which is adjacent to Meeting House Terrace, Mariel section of town. That's been completed this spring. Um, that represents about 1.1 miles out of our eighty-six miles of local roads, so, you know, common name or other roads that people generally live on and, uh, will think of as their community. We also finished Asperdough Ridge Road Bridge by West Meeting House Road this October. Um, we completed Riverview Road Bridge, um, in May of this year, so I guess we're still in May, but it was opened earlier this month. So we're moving along with both repairing our bridges and our roads, um, funds allowed. Additionally, you'll see this around town, we're in the process of crack sealing roads, so we've done about six miles so far this fiscal year, but that's still in progress. We just recently finished the chip seal funding. That was under the current budget, an amount of about seventeen twenty-one miles. And then we building, built about six miles of road, and some of those roads have got chip sealed over in the last week, but those were prepped and, you know, survived the winter better than, than some other roads. And that was the intent was to take away the bad sections of those roads and provide smoother surface for the traffic on public. Um, it also makes it easier for us to file that, try to scrape ice off of, you know, your driveway if there's a section that's broken up, a lot harder to snow and ice off of. We also did many other smaller activities and tasks out there, um, safety repairs and other items that's budgeted allow. So going forward to 2015, 16, um, in our operating capital, and that's, it got brought up a while ago. Still River Drive, we're looking to resurface that, so those of you that drive that on a regular basis, you know, know about when that was built and kind of generally the condition of that. Grove Street, the section from Bill Street down Anderson Avenue, so we had this very nice intersection, um, with sixty-seven to two oh two. Um, we had the Era Project, we've surfaced the southern portion of the road, represents probably the vast majority of the length that people travel. And then unfortunately, we have this poor section, um, so you can kind of see the difference, it brings the same traffic on public, but that's why, you know, we're specifically requesting funds, that this isn't something that we do too under our normal highway construction budget. Additionally, um, as I indicated earlier, we have about eighty-six miles of local roads, and there's four roads, uh, this list of Carriage Drive and Archer's Lane, um, which are sort of in the neighborhood, adjacent to each other. And then the same thing with Roadway Drive and Gaylord Road, again, roads that are adjacent to each other, that makes sense, that, you know, share drainage systems, you know, generally share an intersection, you know, things like that, because it's a little bit more, thank for our budget on the repairs. Additionally, in that, um, you know, fall, we were able to crack seal the town hall part of the month, there's more work to be done. That was generally constructed for two thousands, um, so it's due for normal maintenance and the same original center. But basically, the continued crack sealing, um, putting the resurfacing on and regenerating the margins out there, so we can park in an efficient, orderly manner. And then there's other bridge repairs and maintenance that sort of add beyond the normal, small repairs and maintenance that we have, but we want to specifically call them out again. That's the Still River Drive Bridge, these are things identified by the P O T during their semi-annual inspection on our over twenty-foot bridges and then border road, again, identified either, you know, physically by a bump, um, as you're going across the expansion joint at the west end of that. Those are items that you need to address, um, because they do service a fair amount of traffic out there. So also, what we have planned, um, is in 2015, 16, so starting July 1st, and we're in the process of either requiring quotes or, um, you know, just planning exactly what roads. We have, we planned to crack seal about eight to twelve miles of road, depending on the road conditions we see out there. Obviously, the amount of material, you know, could be consumed if you don't choose the correct roads. So that's why generally we've tried to keep, they're good roads, good, um, in that category. And then again, um, from a pavement preservation standpoint, chip sealing, again, twelve to fifteen miles, um, you know, that can be a variety of conditions of road. But basically, we want to preserve the good sections of the road, um, and pick the right, the right roads in areas so people are able to travel on, mostly the collector roads, generally, but there are also local roads that are taken care of in that program. And then, as I said, milling and filling, um, what we're looking at is roads that are, you know, in slightly worse condition, have some longer stretches of distress on the road, you know, generally make an unpleasant experience traveling down the road. But again, from a cost-effectiveness and a project standpoint, we try to, you know, handle sections of town that we see, um, you know, people generally using, um, a fair amount, so there's a lot of traffic on. Asperdough Ridge Road, we have road races that go down that road, and bridge projects, other things. West Meeting House Road One, which again, gives some general connections of some neighborhoods. And then Mariel Road One and Two, which, um, if you remember a few years ago, um, the upper section of Mariel, uh, one point eight miles, and these roads are just due for a little bit, enhance maintenance, is really what we're looking at. So coming this year also, Asperdough Ridge Road Bridge, southern end by the Brass Mill, that will keep one lane open for traffic, alternating traffic. And then Wellsville Avenue Bridge, where we have a full closure, um, to reconstruct the deck of that, of, of our fair shape, um, so they'll be in payment and so on. And then, um, kind of like touched on it a little bit earlier about Grove Street, but one thing we do do, I mean, is obviously safety repairs is the type of charge. So, you know, knowing lots of pothole out there, it sort of can ruin your day if that's the case. But generally, the safety repairs, we need to keep the roads in passable condition, um, well, cost-effectively doing that. So there's pothole filling, there's some thin overlays in spots, there's milling and filling some areas that's a short-term fix, that may only last a year, that may last up to four years, but generally, um, it's the pending for the next fix or capital request or other funding mechanisms in future years that we're
Well, example, like Grove Street, you know, the conundrum of the fact that we have a program overly planned on that road, and so we're, you know, trying to do what's required safety-wise on the road to keep it passable, um, without injury, but yet, we don't want to spend a whole lot of money on repairs that effectively we're going to, you know, we're going to mill up in the, you know, near future, um, before it becomes a, you know, so rather try to be a little more frugal about how we're spending our money, um, we're trying to keep the safety repairs and that, um, to the essential ones and not, you know, you know the viability, it's not the best right now, but, you know, the future project plan here to, uh, do, you know, that's to be played somewhere.
So Mike, we have some questions that want to be asked right now, if you don't mind, and then you can continue. Joe?
Yeah, obviously, it's good, I want to mention Grove Street. Um, I don't know what, do we know what the number of victims per day will be Monday through Friday?
Last track that I remember is about, and that section is about eleven thousand per day.
Yes. And I think, uh, most of them are in, in the commuting hours. Um, it, to pick up on your comments, Mike, it's safety and passability, um, I just know, because I drive it every day, uh, and, and commuters, they don't use Bridge Street, because it's, it takes a real long time to cross it in the morning traffic. So maybe goes the back way. Um, it is, I'm finding it hard to believe it's right now safe and passable, and I know we don't want to throw away money, but can we do something temporary? We're not going to get Grove Street, even if this all works out with the reallocation of this, this bond money, it's going to take time to get it out today and get it done. That may, and realistically, or would we see any kind of work on that section of Grove Street before the end of summer?
Well, we, sort of life get to it, I know about, you know, the end, we say the end of summer, um, there's still some planning, stuff to be done, once the money, you know, is available to us. If the surveys are done, and some, some, uh, engineer drainage points, uh, correct, you know, we expect to pick it real long time, we've already done some of the work, um, to the second candidate office, but, um, you know, without some final information, we obviously can't beat that.
So it's a little bit bigger, it's a bigger project if that was to be redone correctly?
Correct, but you're looking at, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project estimate here, that's going to become available, and we, we could easily to, to make that road, um, I'll say, more aesthetically pleasing and more comfortable to ride on. We probably spent almost half that money, um, you know, a lot to repair on that thing, literally take us the opportunity to overlay those sections of road, um, with the, with the machine, and we're probably talking about, you know, and the exact estimate, uh, we'd have to guess, it would take several hundred tons of asphalt to do those repairs right now. And from a cost-effective standpoint, it doesn't make sense to me to do that when we have this project coming about, because we're buying six months' time, effectively, or four months' time. And that means that we need approved expenditure funds, because we really don't have that much funds left right now, and we're obviously dealing with many other rooms that haven't had similar conditions that have tried to follow that, um, currently, you know, after the four winters, so.
Well, and that's
As is to, you know, expedite the funds getting to us so that we can start that process as soon as possible, that's what we have to do.
And that's what, I was thinking about major project, but by lack of bit of work, pothole repair, some of those holes have gotten tremendous in size. I know we, we, we did a little bit of it in the later part of the winter, but something, and I don't know if we can determine this pothole is bigger and more dangerous, because it's closer to the center line than this one over here, uh, on the edge of, of, of the white line. So, you know, you're less likely to run into that, it's an arse pot, but you're more likely to hit the one on the center line. If we, I think, if we, we, it, to get it fully planned out, fully done the right way, which is the wise thing, but we're probably talking, at best case scenario, with the way I'm hearing, is the fall. I think the people of this unit that write Grove Street are going to be out of their minds by fall. This can, that section can only get worse right now. Every car, every truck that gets one of those off potholes, they're not
We have, I'll try to, I'll try to, we haven't really discussed this mileage yet, however, once the money is available to us, there's certain things I can do, I think, to help make it safer. Uh, one of the things I can do is actually mill the road, although I may not hit it for another couple of months after that point in time. I can mill it to get certainly more comfortable to ride.
It's like, it's gro, yeah, it's grooved.
We can, we can do a little bit of that kind of repair, because that's money we're going, that's not, I hate to say wasted money, it's not money that's duplicated in another surface. Mill the road, something that's, we're going to be late, so whether I mill it on day one, I mean, I can't necessarily do great that much, you know, shortly thereafter, we get the money, I think I can go ahead and do something like that, and then, you know, we can get our final design done, get some drainage work done, that we plan on doing, that before we can file over. But at least that will make it a little bit more, you know, palatable for people to drive on, you know, most of the time. Without the money, there, I can't, I mean, I can't wait without, you know, without money, you know, but
Maybe, maybe that's, maybe that's, that's a small alternative. Somebody, if, if someone hasn't blown out a tire yet or bent a rim, I, I, I'd be shocked, to be honest. I'd hit one of those one day, and it'd just rattle my cage, I'm like, this is a little
Certainly, we get those off, we go out there, you know, anytime a report like that comes, or even our guys who travel on the road, they see a pothole that they report right back to us, we get a customer out there, you know, to fix, you need, it does make it, um, more comfortable to ride, but it certainly doesn't jar you where, you know, you're going to blow out a rim or something like that. But, you know, it does happen, obviously, potholes do, do form like that, especially after rainstorms, um, you know, so that's usually when we're not controlling, we'll try to get it fixed up as soon as we can, but, uh, like I said, we're going to make it happen all we have to, so.
May, maybe the milling of it is, is a great idea for, for now, and that'll get us to the point where we can, or something, because then, you know, I, I don't drive whole roads in this town, but I drive that one, and it is horrific. The other question I have, while I still have your attention, I'll leave the court street alone for a minute. Um, you, you guys just chips, uh, seal mill, uh, paper mill road, right?
Correct.
You, how, like, in the last week, is that?
Um, I believe it was last Tuesday, or Monday, Saturday, I guess.
It was Tuesday, because I, it's, I drove on it on the weekend, it was obviously, it's snows right. And I know part of that process is, but I, it looked like a lot of the stone packed up, because it's just the volume of traffic, it literally got pushed up with the piles on the side. Do you guys ever go back and just regret, or do you just allow time to, to?
On that road in particular, and if you look at the website, you know, I didn't update it today, I listed that it was swept this morning, and that was the
Okay.
Last year of stuff, so.
Because it almost
If you go all that way tonight, it's, it's much better.
Just, it usually takes about five to seven days, five to ten days, maybe.
Very dis-swept.
So you have to let the snow enter a little lot, obviously, you know, any of the loose ones, they can kick to the sides, um, first, and then they're compacted sweet, we, that's
Okay.
This is exactly, so. I think it was on, so I, I saw it coming back from that way today, um, I assume that that's
Yeah, I missed that.
We checked specifically, but
Alright, thank you.
Okay.
Did, uh, you want to go on with the rest of the update, or just direct to the questions?
We were basically done, the only two of the projects we had, I mean, just so you're aware, we've got some great projects that are coming about, Bridge Street sidewalks, it's out of bid currently, you know, it's a riverwalk freeway, waiting for a, um, uh, final, I, the final approval, I guess, from our, um, client contact at, uh, the D E P.
Well, the US Fish and Wildlife, where you have that, but also the Army Corps of Engineers, and it's obviously a fairly large waterway, so.
We're going to get underway with that project later this summer.
And you did a walk-through of Centennial Station?
And we did a walk-through of Centennial Station. Um, we had seventeen contractors represented by about thirty people, um, today that had walked through the facility. We sponsored our bid, ten thousand, which went out on, I believe, May sixteen, about a week and a half ago. We had a mandatory walk-through today, so seventeen vendors showed up, gave them plans, um, to this point, and really they're, uh, they're in, uh, looking it out, and so our bids are due June eighteen, um, for, uh, signal those one back. And obviously, I might have been away, it's, you know, they showed up, they're
So we have the D E C D Deputy Commissioner here today also, and he, uh, I introduced him to Mike, he's here with Luigi about that project and anything else in town. And he did lead his card and say if there are any issues or problems that come through during And he did lead his card and say if there are any issues or problems that come through during that project, he was really interested. And he's been there for, what did he say, three months? He was appointed three months ago. Young guy, Tim Sullivan. So he seemed real willing to wanna assist everybody. So that was a good meeting. So we did talk a little about tourism and stuff, but I'll update you guys another time.
I'm curious, shall we gonna get rid of the demolition? You gonna train that up, truck it up, or?
Uh, we haven't heard that specifically yet because that's obviously, that is part of their bid proposal. Um, several of them had asked today if that train line's available to be used. And we've offered them Husqvarna's contact information, that's something that they could use. Um, should Husqvarna and then come up to an agreement and or inspection teacher, that's obviously useful in rail lines, it's gonna have Husqvarna. That Husqvarna's gonna allow them to do as well. But it's certainly an option that's available to them. Uh, barring that being the case, most of it, uh, obviously by truck.
Katie?
Um, so I'll go right to what was mentioned earlier, we talked about Grove Street. And I have to tell you that I know other town roads need help. But the largest amount of complaints and noise and comments from people about Grove Street, and I'm sure you know that. So I'm just gonna say, Joe already said it all. I don't drive on it every day. But if you could do something to make that easier, uh, a lot of people would be happy. My question is about the rotary, uh, human rotary, last we seen here. What, hmm? Roundabout, excuse me.
Modern roundabout.
Okay. What is, you obviously wouldn't intend, I hope, to do that during the time you're, you just didn't tell everybody to stay home.
My, uh, well, yeah, Dan, I thought just a little bit about this, uh, you know, my timeline of these projects when they come through. Um, we're looking at a design right now that's, that's gonna take us through the fall, early winter, in terms of the, the roundabout. With the approval process that we have to go through, get everything through the state, any rental issues, um, we don't see it going, I don't see it going out today before.
So Grove Street resurfacing or whatever you, your term for it, uh, will be done and over with before that's?
Correct. And then I would match Still River Drive money that's coming through with, with this proposal to what we do, we want. We would then do all the pavement at one time out of Still River Drive, um, from basically the roundabout area. And I believe it's the west side of the month, say, um, maybe some of the, some of the eastern side of that intersection. Not from the exact, you know, what we, we probably call it, but majority is to the west side of that. But either, either case, all of the pavement would then be done, um, at the same time we're gonna, we would finish pavement on the roundabout. We would then have that map, and also do finish pavement on the rest of the road.
Um, and Leslie, you have any sense of what percentage of this work that you have here on this, I know this is not a full encompassing, but is gonna be subcontracted and how much you're gonna do yourself?
Well, this work on here?
Yeah.
Um, all of that, other than the plant proactivations, um, which crack seal is done by us. Um, everything else is pretty much done through safety repairs, of course, are done by my crews or all crews. Um, all the rest of the work is generally contracted work.
So the stuff that your guys do, is there any advantage in speeding things up, particularly in some of these roads that are really bad, bad shape, by subbing it out? When you only have so many guys and so many machines?
We solved our barriers here. It's part of our process. So we got off our big data anymore. We're not really in the business of doing, you know, major overlays like this, like these projects are really required. Um, we, you know, we plan on doing some minor repairs. We can't talk about some milling and fill. Those are, you know, fifty foot stretches of road, that's where it becomes a little cheaper for early yard guys to do that kind of work. Um, you need a machine to do it, but it's, it's just glorified handwork, if you wanna say, in a lot of cases. But, um, we're doing a, a full over the project, talking about basically Grove Street, it's, you know, somewhere around sixteen hundred. You have tons of asphalt that has to down just for that stretch.
So, so it hasn't, you're not holding up any, any timeliness of anything by keeping it in, to our guys. You are going out to bid on all of those things, which hopefully will afford us a more expeditious action.
So in fact, many of the bids have already gone out for the services needed for these projects. So they're already being either advertised or have been advertised in a very, very nice place. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Pete?
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Mike and Dan. It comes now. Kind of still segueing from my two fellow councilmen on Grove Street, is there an opportunity to move that project out?
Well, I don't know how to answer that, to tell you the truth. Um, as soon as the money's available, we're gonna, we're gonna hit it as hard as we can. And we know it's property. We certainly understand that, um, the condition of that road right now. Um, so.
So it'll be new back as the appropriation of the law.
Correct. Yeah.
Uh, question two, Long Mountain Road, is there anything that works? I thought we were gonna do something up there this summer.
So there's several roads, I don't recall all of them, um, that are in our capital growth plan, um, which is, I guess, I'll say a different funding mechanism. Um, it does come through the, the budget approval process. There's usually bond funds that come through on that. So that's, the Long Mountain is one of our higher, it's the first year of our five year capital plan. Um, you know, projects would be done under that plan. My village has thought about maybe have reserve funds and, you know, other options of funding those things. So, you know, we have the work, you know, with me there and everybody else on how to get those projects funded. Obviously, you know, um, they're expensive. So, you know, we certainly need to see, we need to focus on that and get those projects, you know, through the system. Uh, because that does backlog the other projects that are two or three years out and the ability to get, you know, to predevelop those parts of the Long Mountain.
Could we see about the appropriation of Grove Street?
Excellent. Then I can give you guys something on the capital reserve line too, because that was discussed during the budget. And, uh, use the capital reserve line for some of those capital hubs. So, good day.
My last question, uh, probably not pronouncing it correctly, but you have your road maintenance map. Before I mention that. And you go out, how many times a year do you go out and reassess and update the map?
We go out, do a lot of cornering roads every year. Um, and then there's obviously customer service calls that our staff goes out and puts that on, as for us on a call basis.
Dan or Mike, have you found with this winter that we've had, very serious winter, have you found a real degrade of the sample of the roads that you have? Sample from this year?
Uh, I, I'll try to, and I'm laughing only because we, we kind of planned the road inspections late in fall to early winter. So when we didn't have that stuff, it was late fall and early winter. Um, we had not now, you know, at least this formal program to go out and reassess the roads, recondition them. That would be now, obviously, greater this fall. And so, um, when we're done with, of course, all of our construction projects. So that's why I kind of laughed at the question, but it's, it's not comparable. It's just, you know, just what we reassess and that's, that's just how our contract works. Um, to say that then, you know, have we seen the deterioration of roads? Because this winter, absolutely, we've seen, you know, a burden on the road because the freeze spot cycles this winter were tremendous. And that's really the worst enemy of a road is freeze spot cycles. And that's just a simple example. There's water infiltrating the road surface, and when you get a lot of rainstorms and, and, you know, the snow gets into those cracks. Which is why we've got rock practicing and we do those preventative programs to try to keep that water out of the, the bases. And then once it freezes, it then hot holds up. Then falls again, you get more water infiltrating, and then freezes again. You keep getting this, you know, this expansion and contraction of roads, um, which is why this winter really stole a lot of, of roads. And it's hurt that, you know, in the state of Connecticut, across the country, and in twenty-one states that had, um, the severe winters that we had. Um, all experienced, you know, these kinds of road problems. It's not localized to local roads, state roads. I'm sure we all have been on friend of roads and seen break out tremendously, uh, kind of over there at. So yes, to say at least, yes, it's taken some all the rest.
And when you answer your question, I hope. Dan, I'm just trying to get a sense of when we plan or renew plan next year for next year's budget. With a major winter than we had, obviously, that's when the coverage would be, you'll be sure as far as expected to.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Deb?
Um, I noticed a lot of activity up on seven on the way to Beaverton. Can you just speak a little bit to what's going on there?
Um, okay, it's a state project. Uh, I understand, well, we, we get notifications by the state of projects that we do there. We can overlay a number. Actually, they're out, I believe, adjusting and replacing base of the tops. Uh, currently, they usually have their, their crew, the contractor, I believe, out there, a lot of that way. Um, and I believe it's a section from thirty-seven to fifty-five. I don't think we're going any further than that. Could be going a little further, but I think that's a section.
Just the house of the Gaylord, so parade on the Monday. I think that's, and it's, it's basically similar to work that they did on two oh two.
And they put in a lot of new drains as well.
They usually replace their catch based tops. I don't know about the, simply drainage pipes. Their, their pipes are usually concrete. So they probably don't replace a lot of those unless they destroy them.
And then we've heard a lot about the main roads in town, but I know a lot of the scenic roads got killed this winter as well. Uh, I know I just recently went on the van and it was awful. So, do we have a timeline and place for some of those scenic roads? Is there anything different we can do to help them out?
Um, we've been, usually takes us, well, we have twenty-six miles wherever I'm at. Um, so put it out there. And, you know, usually takes us about, in the springtime, we're doing kind of a more, um, permanent. And, uh, you know, fixing all of those potholes and all of the other drainage issues, things like that would work. And it takes about eight weeks to get one round fully through those roads, the system. So we're going to do it. Of course, we're down to one grader right now, second one. I'm gonna say it's in transit, basically that vendor shop right down the ship from the manufacturer to the vendor shop that did it. And he had a couple of items to add to that. I believe we were supposed to get them next week. So that's gonna be, we'll get a second grader. And I believe we're doing, we got unfortunate grader in the road with one grader that happened. I don't know what's, we lost some of it last year. So we have this in second part, so.
And I know, uh, there's just been tons of comments all over about potholes, and I understand the, the issue of it. But it seems like there are a number of people in town that don't know who call or what to do to proactively inform you about this. So just while you're on there, do mind getting a little part.
You can always plug our website, www.melford.org, and request a service. It's right there in the top right corner of our screen. Uh, on the main webpage, you can simply request it right on there. Uh, you can put in the location, just a couple of details that I should fill out. And, uh, that can get you, um, a direct email to my department, um, so they can, um, buy the appropriate staff in there. And maybe they can respond to those, make sure that it gets added to the list correctly. Um, obviously, we just called the office, they're, now, our main offices, uh, so thirty-five, five, six, zero, four, they're, they're following right into one of my staff. I think they know those staff.
And how do they track progress?
Um, e- either case, uh, through the website system, it goes to the Q Alert, uh, which is a service request, uh, opportunity that we have a website developer. Um, it comes to my office directly as a phone call. We use a little different work management program, but nonetheless, it's input as a, um, task effectively for us. Like it's assigned to our work group. And they, obviously, we have private values. And, you know, at any one time right now, we would have, um, past couple of weeks, we could try and hit the pothole passion a little bit harder, um, with, with two crews. But, you know, we're busy with, you mentioned gravel roads, uh, we're busy with trying to get the sweeping program, you know, leading through the year. You know, a lot of the blocks, you like that program done before and more than that, which we really want to make it to, of course, to accomplish. But, you know, um, several other tasks that we have, uh, getting out, just basically, um, arguing with our customer service providers, potholes, guy, and everything like that. So, um, we're trying to get at least two crews out there, I know, as often as we can, but not, someday to make it as many as four out there in one day, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you, Mary. Jay, um, can you answer my question? It's about the timing of, um, the roundabout and, um, so. Do you wanna see those things colliding?
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, we'd all be in trouble. Frank?
The Exfield River Walk, what, what are you gonna do?
On the Exfield River Walk, um, basically, this is a G Husqvarna River restoration project, so it's very big stabilization. So, um, they're taking place in the basic species of little trees that are failing there and replace that with, you know, big loads. Sable moors, a variety of shrub wreath, um, to, to, that area, I think, a little more in addition to that. And we're walking that from basically kayak notch to repot works and searred fuel is currently. And that's kind of the relationship of us, if you look deep, that border, or if they have bridges and I see Bridge Street, Seabrand, have the south end of the Exfield Road. The time the sidewalk was already there on Bridge Street, two of us, it's right there.
Well, you got a great adage from me because I, I, I noticed that this, this year especially, um, when the people come down to watch the duck race. They, they wanna see the ducks come down. They used to spread out all along from, from the parking lot, from your parking lot across from public works down. They used to put their blankets and they could watch the ducks come down. And now they're all crawling down by the boat there because you can't see. It's really one of the nicest areas of, of the Melfords River area, and it's all overgrown with the, with the, with the big mulcher. They're kind of like out of sight and then the over, the underbrush, it's just really taking away that scenic value. And that's a nice calm area of, of the river. You get a nice view up, up the river. So I think that, that's a great investment in life. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Walter?
I'm good.
Katie?
Uh, just a question. You mentioned that you go out in the fall to early winter to assess the roads. Now, to me, that's a little counterintuitive. Like, how come you don't go to spring and see what they need? Or you're saying you've already done, you've used your money to fix everything during the summer? So you're going out in the fall to see what, did you get this?
Uh, well, there are reasons to do it in the fall. I mean, mostly, I wanna say it's for budget preparation to finish some of our accounting for what got done and what needs to be planned for the spring. And then additionally, um, well, there may be unexpected failures. I mean, roads generally create a, a project, a predictable, you know, pattern. And that's why Grove Street's on this request, that's why Still River's on this request.
Because you saw in the fall how bad it was.
Correct. And so no, um, you know, prior.
Would you say that the budget prep is your prime driver to plan YouTube then? If you didn't have to worry about the budget, would you still do it then?
Ultimately, I think we'd like to update it after the construction season's done because we're able to most current, at least information, of course, on those roads. So we do those roads and we also do the rest of our plant, instead of roads that, that we, that did, so.
And since you couldn't see some of them because we had so much snow coming when it did, so would you just expedite and move it in the spring or?
Well, to accomplish the hundred and four roads that we did around the, the winter weather that we have in July.
At least before January, so.
Oh, okay. How's it serious?
Well, in, in our prime planting season, besides the budgeting generally, we gotta set that supportive of our budget. And given it's consistent funding, which is important for us from a planning standpoint, and being, communicating with the customer when their road is off of their store. Making sure, so.
Thanks. Any other questions for Mike at this time? Or Dan?
Yes.
Um, this is only for the town's questions. But I'll be happy to talk to you after the meeting.
Okay.
All right. And I, if we don't have any other questions for Dan and Mike at this time, um, then I would like to request to move Sullivan Farm up since we do have people here to speak to it.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
So if, uh, item nine is discussion of possible action on the extension of our lease and maintenance contract with Martin and Walden LLC. Included in your package was their business plan. And also handed out this evening was an extension of the existing lease and operations agreement updated by Randy and reviewed. Um, I think that these two young people did a great job last year in their first year. And they've been spending the winter educating themselves on other types of farming opportunities that they'd like to bring to the town. And they have cordially accepted an invitation to update you on what they'd like to see happen.
So any questions over here?
So it's Graham.
I'm Graham Melvin.
I am Rita Martin. You're Mary. Uh, together, we own Martin Walden LLC, co-activated as of last year because of our farm, the Silver Farm. Um, last year, we leased a hundred and six acres, the whole farm premises property of Silver Farm. Although in our agreement that the agency would take care of the, um, painting, painting, uh, most of the property. Would come and assess the safety care of the barnyard, the barn stand, and then two or three acres of farming property outside on the roadside. So I just wanted to take a quick minute to just recap you about what we did last year, this, um, great opportunity, and if you had a... And if you had it, and we had so good ourselves hard as we're here.
So last year, about this time, we out of our old RCs. We were really excited to plant them and we did and couldn't wait them to come up. But unfortunately, we had a humid rainstorm and it wiped out a half of our seeds last year. But some of the perennials remained, like our strawberries and blackberry plants that we had. This is the Nile River in Milford County. That's what happened to one of our fields last year, a tremendous rainstorm.
I don't know. It was a big rainstorm that took out, you know, most of the food and the sunshine.
There was a flood of blooming water in one of the fields, it was crazy.
So it was quite devastating to our native neighbors on the farm, but.
We got right back up and thankfully, a little house that is there was protected from all the rains. So we had a lot of spicy lettuce mix, which was really popular. That's a head cabbage and also these cucumbers that we grew last year, salt cut cucumbers. People love them, so those are just some of the things that we kind of adapted, large store. Here, just some more pictures of the things that we planted. We've got squash, a lot of garlic, people love garlic that came out of the fields. Tomatoes and beautiful flowers.
Yep, we, one of our responsibilities is to maintain perennial beds. So we planted, made some seeds in our perennials that we need to maintain there. It's really important to us to keep that farming looking beautiful and people can drive by, knowing that the gardens and the trees and shrubs. And also, you mentioned the garlic, it was so popular that we've since invested quite a bit of our resources into planting new garlic harvests and just putting that quite deeply over this part of the country. We opened up the stand, I believe, early June last year, as soon as we could, all kind of what was available as soon as it was possible. And, you know, since we grow apples and corn, I still think it's very important to create a one-stop local shop for our community. It's, you know, more worth it to pull off a new road. It grew very successful throughout the entire season.
Last year, we attended the nuclear, the farmers market. There's brands in town, people were really excited about it because they wanted a place where they could get some fresh produce, but there wasn't. And we got a girl in this, Jen Hyrum. And she was.
But she had just graduated last year. She was a Girl Scout, that was her goal project to start with. So we sort of, we were one of three vendors, the only vegetable producer. And we carry our model with us that, you know, Sullivan Farm, where it's all local. So not only did our field clients come there, but they also came to visit us and we've known her quite often. They were happy with, you know, our variety that we had to offer. From September twenty eighth, we hosted a wedding on Sullivan Farm. In one of the hay fields in San Jose, we took place on our barnyard, our park that we turned for from the height of crushes from Sharon. And we said that the front room was absolutely beautiful. And we really enjoyed having our event on Sullivan Farm. So these are our couple of pictures. It was a beautiful day, a beautiful wedding. And it went, the weather at night, absolutely spectacular and made very happy with it.
And then later on in the year, we had the farm festival, which was really a challenge for us because there was a lot of planning, but we were also excited with that. We had tons of stuff going on. You can see we have a sugar house, they were, they evaporated running just with water. But it was still really cool to see. A few blacksmiths got in contact with us and they came and had a live demonstration, so that was really cool. You could stand there and watch them bang out a little pot over there or a belt buckle in like ten minutes. It was fantastic. We also had a mini farmers' market there. So a few different local farmers came and showed support. Then we had a lot of kids' activities free and you could play with some of them, like building a birdhouse or a base game, something like that. We also had live music there pretty much all day, which people really enjoyed. And of course, food, good food.
We had also other means of free education, just to educate people, we're way back educating community. Just enjoying ourselves and learning at the same time. Over on the right of the screen, you'll see Sharon, Princess Sullivan. She had, at Sullivan Farm, we produced a booklet about the history of Sullivan Farm. So Graham and I asked for permission to do this, kind of do third printing. So we printed a bunch of those copies out to share with a couple of them. She was there answering various questions about the property's history. Yeah, with education, we offered the fifty vendors that had signed up to come for the day to present, to bring along an educational board. And in exchange for winning the best display, we would definitely register to that on this, on COVID education. Other kind of activities, petting zoos and demonstrations, even over the Milford Cowalers. Something that I've learned about with parents, so we're. And that night, we headed off to the Connecticut State Ranch Dinner. And we're awarded the National Agricultural Professional Award for the year. Pretty much, we started the farm joint for age, because we wanted to be involved. We very much wanted to be involved with the community, but we felt this was because we had to do it, especially since a lot of the people are elderly. We figured we'd add some pressure on, I guess. Graham is very, he is most in charge early, making the decisions for the farm in itself. I'm there to help him by his side, but I am very computer savvy and I deal with all of the farm stand ordering and stocking. So we decided with the local farm stand to continue until, you know, when the season is pretty much over. Generally speaking, with farm stands, to do an initiative with Thanksgiving. So we got in contact with E. C. Farm, Mooseup, Connecticut, ordered grass by turkeys. And I think we sold about fifteen turkeys. And they were from New York City, Rocksperry, Richfield, and, um, you know, for Washington. Have a, they're very wide-minded on that, because it's our farm stand. So that was very popular, probably to add a better protection for the nature.
And during this past winter, we were lucky enough to travel through Europe and we got to several different farms and just see how they do things there. This was one family that stayed with us long, as we were there for five weeks. We did everything from learning how to properly slaughter ducks for food and collect the wild ground, which is very popular there. And every morning, we went there, we fed the cows and we just learned about the land and culture aspects of how they do it.
Helped them get their vegetable garden ready for the season. Shed some light on things that we had learned over the year and with our agricultural background, we taught them a few things. So it's a lot of community engagement we learned, so it was a great experience. And, you know, in the future, given a longer-term responsibility, Sullivan Farm is definitely long-term organic practices we'd like to apply to the property. Thus far, a few months that we've had back, we've opened a stand as a May first already. We did, again, people are coming back from Little Neowes down the street saying, thank you so much for being here. Glad you're back, you know, to be back to help. Did good too, unless you had your man in plant field and partnered with Andrew Speakers. A farm that we buy from in Kent. That was very successful, we should come back. It's our pension partner with local businesses, farms, groups, clubs. This is the town property, we don't want to just be about, about everybody using it as an initiative and idea for the property, we'd love to collaborate with them. This is from this last Friday, a couple got married from Milford to St. Francis. And they're off to a reception in Washington, but they had free plans to come and take their final pictures at the property. They fell in love at the property side. Some more pictures. So granted opportunity at Sullivan Farm again, these are some of the things we should do, but especially build on our successes.
Sure. One thing I'm really excited for this year is the new farmers' market on Sullivan Farm property. We're really excited about that, I think, though we did a farmers' market in town, which would be extremely beneficial, especially for some of the restaurant owners here in town. They were really fired up about it, they love a place to go and buy wholesale local organic vegetables for their meals.
For weekends.
For weekends, yeah. During the season.
This year, we plan on hiring some SAE student from Nawa. If you don't know them, I both went to Nawa. It would be an agriculture program. And SAEs, which otherwise stands for Supervised Agricultural Experience, basically is four years where you get two hundred dollars a year of an agriculturalist job. And that's really sort of built us, including our, and our strong work ethic and dedication to where our local, our minds do. So to get back to that program, we're going to get young SAE students, we're gonna start with children's trade. So they can help us, and they're gonna be more successful and they're just wanting to get started.
Another thing I'm really excited for is a program which I call Sports and Shores. So it'll be like a casual, Sunday afternoon, you can bring your family by and break up some leaves or pick up some sticks, whatever. And then toward the evening, there'll be a small fire and mushrooms will be provided and everybody can make smores. I think it'd be a nice thing to keep you out of the house.
All in all, we want to, we want to have, you know, agroeducational events, entertainment. Again, so it's not just about us, they're my daughter, they're our dad, and they can learn home. And if somebody wants to be part of the property, so those are our plans for this year. To, to, to go on our passive basis and try to be better.
All the exit lines work. We could test it though. The views must. Not a lot of us.
Like a presentation with different questions. First reading on your, it's like your, your plan, your Martin Walden LLC. So you briefly mentioned a couple of things. I'd like that you could stand a little bit more on. First is work with local organizations and create ways to highlight the presence and benefits to our town. So what do you envision and do?
Well, one of the things we're super excited about is farm field dinners. And I know that there's a new director at the Silo, kind of farm trust. And last year, I connected with Liva, who's the former director. And she was telling me, you know, she was asking, she said, she loves my ideas. She was saying, you know, how can we be nervous of, you know, this little side road on Route two oh two? Because we're right on Route seven, and we're blessed to be there, and that's a great exposure. We'd like to share that a lot, obviously. So we're saying, you know, we would love to do like a farm field dinner, or events together where we can only build upon each other's benefits of this town. Though women's, well, you know, sort of the garden, like to like host little events or forums or support a garden, like, and teach people that just be, okay, where they could, you know, further educate. So just things like that, or the agency, you know, they're always cluttering around, just do something more official. A master gardener had approached us, you know, and at the front of Sullivan Farm, we used to teach kids, is their way to do that again. So, you know, Jason has kids that he wants to bring on to teach them. That's something that we're totally open, blackberry.
And you also mentioned briefly a little bit about everyday farmers' market. Do you envision, or during the weekend, do you envision partnering with farmers' markets that's here with local farms now? Or what's your vision for this farmers' market?
Well, as the farmers' market stands on the green on Saturdays, it's, they're very minimal amount of vendors. And it's hard to get in there as a farmer, for instance, we were waiting to enter, and they have a winter market. A winter meeting where you have to apply and they vote you in. So it's harder for people to say, oh, by the way, this week I have a ton of sunflowers, may I come try and sell them? So things like that, it's just that we would partner with them, definitely offer all of them to come, but we would certify it as its own market through this state. It would have on Wednesdays from like three to seven in the afternoon when people are coming up and work. So definitely mention it to them, definitely work with them, you know, we benefit each other. So, you know, from Saturday to come here Wednesday, it's not a competition.
Right. Do you envision having your farmers' market on Saturday?
No, not during the.
It would be during the week.
I'd say locals can have local food all week and not have to wait, you know, stretch all the way to Saturday.
And then you briefly mentioned hiring SAE students from Nawa. What about Milford?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, definitely there.
A lot of houses is for Milford, do you know Milford have, like, kids have that opportunity to go through this? I don't know.
They don't, that's, that's why we've been, I, we both went to Nawa, I mean, we love all the programs that they have. We learn so much from them. So we would definitely love to get back to them. And certainly, if anyone in Milford is interested in agriculture, we're gonna help them out too.
So they go to, if I was in Milford and I wanted to go there, which I go to Nawa.
You'd go to Nawa and make hair.
Exactly. The one, my brother, for instance, not you guys, he's from Milford, but I would hire, say, my brother, because he's a Milford agricultural student, like we were, or Burgor, someone very close who's interested in working with us. Anyone from Milford can apply. And it's a little more challenging because, you know, with their SAE title, because school bags come up also with libraries, so it's on top of ours, so it's just that, I'm sure they're going to protect us. But, you know, a Milford student can come along, but we have guidance and our roots that, you know, an eighteen-year-old and under cannot hop on a tractor and usually, maybe those are the people that we're looking for. So it's sort of, we're trying to figure out who we need and how we have to be, and, you know, who's safe and willing to hire.
Did you have any PSL students help you last year?
Um, volunteer basis, they were eighth graders going into Nawa. Those are the two that we're thinking about hiring this year, just because they had experience with us and trust them at this point. So they're our first pick for their Nawa students.
I just had a question concerning the lease. Says, whereas the tenant desires to maintain a portion of the form of its buildings and improvements, do you notice any of the buildings being some kind of work with improvement?
There's a bar, if you're looking at the largest bar, a ground bar to the left, and that is pretty old and I think it needs to be replaced or some sort of maintenance up to that.
The UFC has a plan for that.
Okay. So that's the kind of thing that comes to mind.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes. Joe? Because I write their names down and say, do this.
I, I live right down the street from the farm, so I live by it all the time. And it's, and I stop at. Finding where to put the money, the first time was a challenge. And I wasn't alone, and those gentlemen, the two of us rolled up. We both had things like, do you know where to mic? No, I don't, but two smart guys, we eventually saw a little. But in there, so come, you, you folks have done just an amazing job with the property. It always looks nice. It's organic food, it's just a very well-done operation. I deserve a lot of credit. And the other question I had is, what do we charge on the lease later?
We didn't, they're doing the maintenance and then they pay to provide a bunch of stuff.
The two fifty?
They have the two fifty, right?
Is that what we charge?
Yep.
Okay. I didn't want to see it go up. I was hoping we weren't on the true side. But thank you very much. Amazing.
Mary Jane?
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations. I mean, it was just a beautiful place and it's just, it's great. And you guys just work so hard and have given us food and such a great asset. Definitely have my vote.
Frank?
It was my privilege to work with Jake Sullivan, owner of that farm, in the seventies. And he, he always wanted to maintain the character of that farm. And when we had the opportunity to buy it, it was, well, we shouldn't spend the money. It's probably some of the best money we spent because it guarantees that gateway into Milford, that world character. And you talk about replacing the barn. I like the old barn because it gives that nostalgic look of the Milford. And I think it's, it's money well-spent and I'm glad to see it's being used and worked. I wish you could give it more. But it's, it's, it's an asset to become, you know, rather than be.
Thank you, Frank. Any other questions, Walter?
Well, I got to say this, I should be that young and that energetic. We got two gents standing right before us, just outstanding, absolutely outstanding. But I'm not that young or energetic.
But, you know, Walter's a retired teacher, you know, so don't let him, you could invite him up to help you do a presentation.
Sure.
Katie?
Well, I have the distinction of having been involved with friends Sullivan Farm and hiring somebody at the last minute, dealing with all the kids that we hired and all the things that were planted and all things like that. And I have to say that you two have outdone any expectation ever. You are absolutely dinosaurs. And I, I know how hard it is and I know that, you know, things happen, but really, I've done a wonderful job. And I, I'm really pleased to see that, you know, you're, you did your stint here and learned a lot. And I'm sure you taught a lot. And that you're bringing in the Nawa kids because they, you know, they need to, because you know, they have to. And I hope that the, that couple acres up on the hill that we first turned over two years ago and cover planted, I hope that you're going to plant something up there, whether it's marking the root agency for potatoes, or you're going to plant potatoes or something. Because that was the whole intention, we'd go into the effort and time and whatever they were going into that. So I hope that's done with, otherwise, I think you did a wonderful job with everything and you made it, you just made it look beautiful.
Any other questions for these guys? Was there a motion?
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Abstained?
Nice job.
We'll talk to you. Nice presentation. Okay, we moved everything around. Let's take a look at this calendar. It's our Thursdays. Discussion of possible action on request to close the Southern Cross over the Green.
So move second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Item eight is the clerk's office with the request for the $4,000 preservation of land records grant.
So move second.
Further discussion? Katie?
This grant is not a matching grant, it's a full, fully funded.
Correct. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Item 10 is money that we're going to get back for money that we spent. This is a grant when we did the conversion for the uniform charter accounts and got it all ready to go into munis. And so this is a $30,000 grant that, you know, it's.
So move second.
Nope, not a match. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Item 10D, our donation. The $1,000 donation from Charles B. Barlow Revocable Trust for restoration of the Old Bourbon Bridge.
What happened to B. back there?
Yeah.
Tell me back, we're already good.
No, we didn't do B.
No, we gotta go back.
We didn't do 10B. Sorry, that was there.
$500 donation from Robert T. DeBois in memory of Sue DeBois for the restoration of the old Bourbon Bridge. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Discussion of possible action on town in Milford's participation with $2,000.
So move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Tax assessor?
So move.
All in favor, oh, hang on. Let the record reflect the balance as posted here on the paperwork from the tax assessor. As the balance after May, here's your page, the balance after May is, you have that, right? Okay. $6,907.11. All in favor?
Aye. Hope you did it, Jerry.
Abstained? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?